Okay, we're recording.
All right, thank you. So today is November 24th, it is 6:00 PM. I am Mayor Julia Johnson and I am calling the City Council to order. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
And one.
Under. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Um, roll call, so I'll just go through the list here. Councilwoman Brenda Kinser, I see you're here. Councilwoman Ellen Kestie.
Present, sorry.
Present too.
Councilman Chuck Owen.
Present.
Councilman Glenn Allen.
Present.
Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Present.
And Councilman Brendan McGoughan.
Present.
All right, I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. Okay, we had a motion by Councilman McGoughan, seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say motion? All right, thank you. The consent agenda, items one through four, looking for.
I move the consent agenda one through four.
Thank you. Okay, so I had a motion by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say motion? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to staff reports, we'll begin with Fire Chief Dean Klinger.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nothing more to report as everybody is well aware of the COVID cases continue to rise. We're continuing to see an increase in the calls that we're going out on and dealing with patients one-on-one with the COVID. We're continuing to work with the county on vaccinations plans when and if that becomes available. So that's about all we have tonight.
All right, thank you. I don't know, Dean, did you see the report that came out by the DEM? Just came out this afternoon that was talking about that almost every county with the exception, I think of two, is at 75% so.
Right, yeah, we saw those and we've, we just got the new numbers from the state and we're actually going through those as we speak.
Great, all right, thank you, Dean. Police Chief Lynn Tucker.
Okay, just a couple of things here. Wanted to thank everybody once again for all of the work they did to get me my baby police officers. I got two of them on Friday. They were very excited to start and even after their first day, they came back. So it must be all, must be working out okay for them. I got two of them out of the academy on Friday and they started on Monday. And then I got two more just graduated at noon today and they'll start on Friday. They're very excited. It's basically like getting out of boot camp. And they're out of boot camp and ready to hit the, hit the beach and get to work. So Harry McGahey and Kira Foster is the ones that started on Monday. And then Cody Beltheisen and Ruben Fortuna are the ones that start on Friday. And we've also got slated for Katie Wilson to be starting on December 16th. Very excited to get Katie back in the fold. She's been away at Marysville for a while, decided the pastures weren't necessarily as green down there as they are up here. And we need her back. We've got Officer Homberg. Is gonna be heading over to Spokane to start a new life and retire at the end of the year. We also had one of our other officers kind of surprise us last week. And came in one morning and says, hey Chief, I'm putting my house up for sale today and I'm looking at a house in Florida. And so the next day he had sold his house for extremely, a lot more than he put it up for. And this last weekend, guess where he was? Florida, looking at houses and found one and made an offer on. So we're gonna be seeing Detective James Hattawalt. Those that know him, he's about six and a half feet, seven feet tall, somewhere in there. Brenda may have mistaken him for Bigfoot a time or two if she saw him going around town. But he's looking at retiring sometime next year. We're trying to keep him as long as we can. So we're gonna be back. People.
Chief, keep the Bigfoot, please.
Yeah, so we've been extremely busy with a lot of calls over the weekend. We've been running short just because it's deer season for a couple of people. And then a couple others are ending some military duty for the, for the season. So I know there was only two of us on over the weekend. And we were domestics, motor vehicle accidents. People, actually, let me get the exact term. Justice involved individuals causing issues for us. That's the woke speak term for the people we're dealing with. Criminals is not appropriate, it's justice involved individuals. And actually, it's actually a fairly accurate description. A lot of the people we're dealing with weren't criminals. They were people that were in desperate need of mental and substance abuse issues. So we got a lot going on. And finally, the last thing that the mayor and I talked about. Was COVID compliance with businesses. We're starting to see people complaining about other businesses. We're not seeing my neighbors having a big party necessarily. And I'm really not very excited about being the Grinch and tearing up somebody's Christmas dinner. But we are going to be concentrating on education and gentle nudging in the right direction. I truly believe that people can make, for the most part, I don't know where I think this, but most people can make good decisions for themselves. That's not really been my experience for the last 28 years, but maybe I'm just optimistic. But most of the people that we're dealing with on this are business owners and they're good people that are trying to stay afloat. That's really the motive. We did get a complaint on a couple of businesses today and I actually checked them out personally. They are, one of them was closed, they weren't even open. And the other one was fully compliant with the governor's orders and actually have a really nice setup. And I'm just gonna throw them out there. The last call bar, they were in complete compliance with the governor's orders. They got a nice tent set up out back, they're serving food and drinks out there. So they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But as the mayor kind of set the tone, we're going to be doing education, request compliance. And we're only really going to be responding to direct complaints on things. We are not going to be seeking out non-mask wearing individuals or people not complying with the governor. But we will back any business that's having trouble with an individual who won't comply with the order and is putting their business in jeopardy. We will back them 100%. But otherwise, we're gonna let some of this be left to the good people that we serve. And we'll just be there as a backstop for those that are really, really, really wanting to push a fight. And education's always gonna be our first step in that direction and request for compliance. And with businesses, we can get them in touch with being a code violation that could threaten their business license or liquor license or something like that. So those are our plans for that. If you have any questions, I'm always available to answer those questions. Or my lieutenant, when he's not taking the Thanksgiving week off, can always answer your questions as well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Well done, thank you. Director of Public Works, Mike Freiberger. Uh, Mark, your, your mic is muted.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties here. So I had to log in on my iPad. My computer is not sensing my camera again, second time this week. So not too much new to report on my end. Right now I'll be reporting or talking about the two utility rate increases a little later in the meeting. But other than that, we're working on design for a number of projects, including the Public Works Facility, the lab operations building down at the wastewater plant. And David is working on the Cascade Trail from Hodgins to Holt Camp. And that's keeping us pretty busy around here. In addition to that, we're still moving forward with the American Disabilities Act. Transition plans and that, that's due to be rolled out in, in March. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Ma- Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Councilman, can I butt in now and ask a question of Mark or do I have to wait for the public?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
What is going on with the John Liner Jones Road undercut by the railroad?
Yes, we're waiting for BNSF to respond to our proposed contract for that work. I've been dealing with Ross Widener, who's kind of our go-between between them and us. Works for both of us as a consultant. And I understand they're just kind of overwhelmed with COVID issues right now. And apparently, the upper level management of BNSF decided to cut back quite a bit of staff and low and behold, their track usage head went down, but it's back up significantly now and so they're scrambling. So we've, we've definitely been given the low priority on that, but they do know that we need to finish that job by June of next year. And every indication is they'll get that done in time for that. So it's a little frustrating all the way around, but that's a very big marshmallow to try to push around as you can probably understand.
All right, thank you. Um, Director of Building and Permits, John Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Planning Commission had a public hearing last week. The Reed Street Property Rezone Request that the council had put in. And of course, it went pretty smoothly. There was a few comments and most of them in support. And the Planning Commission made a recommendation to to rezone it to public and that all of the procedural history will be in the documents that come to you when we bring you the 2020 docket as a complete packet, which I'm hoping we'll be able to do the December 9th meeting. Planning Commission also had a public hearing on some proposed, they've been working on proposed changes to the downtown parking requirements. So they worked their way through that and they made a recommendation on that as well. So that will also be coming to the council pretty soon. And again, with that, I'll explain all of the details of it when I bring it to the council. As far aside from that, staff, we've been working on a, a records request that's somehow taking a lot of my time. And the request of a lot of people in our department. And yeah, otherwise, things are going along nicely. I think we're as far as building permits go, I was looking at the Jones Estates, which is, I think it's 67 lots in the Jones Estates subdivision. And they're about halfway done with that as far as building permits issued. We've issued or received permits for about half of those lots. So we're thinking that that might be built out in about a year, or at least they'll be done submitting permits for, they'll be out of lots to submit permits for in about a year. So you've probably noticed that two other subdivisions are under construction over on the Garigal Road, 85 lot, they've got started. And then on Jones Road in between, that will make the connection from Garnavine Road down to FNS Grade Road. They've started construction on that, although that one just has begun. That's what's going on in building and planning.
Um, John, who are the contractors on all of those?
Well, BYK.
By case on two of them.
BYK Construction owns both of those projects.
Okay.
And as far as the two under, the two plats under construction, the the Jones Estates, also known as Cambridge Commons, is owned by Landed Gentry and they're doing all the home construction there.
Thank you, John. Okay, Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
Mainly, we are focusing on getting the PD vehicles outfitted for the baby police officers, as Lynn says. And I'm working away on preparation for the email migration, which will, the cutover is tomorrow at 3:00 PM. So if council members and managers alike, if you can get your, your, any mobile devices to me prior to 3:00 PM tomorrow, that would be great. And I will have iPads back to you by no later than Monday. And if any of you have telephones that need to be updated with the new mail server, I'll try to turn those around within 30 minutes or so. So. And that's about it.
All right, thank you, Bill. You always have lots of balls in the air. Um, Finance Manager, Jill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just have a couple of things to report. We had our new AP Clerk start on Monday. Her name is Joyce Nesselhoff and Cheryl worked with her on Monday. And we'll be working with her until Cheryl's retirement on the 15th. So we're hoping to have a smooth transition. Cheryl has done a great job preparing for that. So we're looking forward to having Joyce on our team. And the other thing, we're wrapping up our CARES reimbursement. The deadline for the last payment request is December 15th. So I'll be working on that the next week and we should have our money very soon. The total award, as you know, was $526,050 and we'll be able to utilize all of that. And in the final, we are, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, on December 1st, we'll be in implementing our phone pay for the bill pay. So people will be able to call in and go right to an automated or live operator for their bill pay for utilities. And other than that, we're always doing a lot of behind the scenes.
Yeah, that you are. Thank you, Jill. Um, City Attorney Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't actually have anything to add this evening. I hope everyone has a happy holiday.
Thank you, Nikki. And our City Supervisor Doug Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of times I try to break my comments down into people, land and money. So I'm gonna do that tonight. People, first thing we have is our Finance Director position is out on, in the market. And we have advertising out in a lot of different places. So far, we've received six applications. Four of those are pretty strong contenders for that position. So we'll keep tabs on that and hope we get some strong candidates in between now and the 10th of December. That's our first official review date of those applications. Jill mentioned, we did have our new employee started down in finance this week. So it's good to get that process going. Land, we have two different things going right now. It's kind of the same ones we've mentioned before. We have the Ballfield property. We have all the signed agreements with Skagit PUD to transfer that property to the city. And with Nikki's help, we'll be looking at closing on that property and making it all official here pretty soon. The Reed Street property, I've been talking with the property owners. We're working out the details of getting the appraisal. And once I have a number and stuff, we'll probably be scheduling an executive session with City Council to discuss the negotiations on that property. That most likely will be on probably December 9th at our next meeting. So on the money side, of course, everything is budget right now. And on tonight's agenda for first read, we have our budget ordinance and the salary ordinance as well. Those are being introduced tonight. So you can take a good look at those, let me know if you have any questions between now and December 9th, when we'll bring those back for a second read and looking for adoption at that time. We do have one item I wanted to let you know about. We have our final budget amendment for the year. As always, December gets to be tricky because we are wrapping up an audit and we have audit things we're trying to do and get into a budget amendment. So we're getting tight as we get to the end of the year. That always happens. You think it's great and then the last month, something gets you. So under the council's rules and the way you do your council meetings, we do a first read and a second read. We may have to see if council would entertain adopting that budget amendment on a first read. And it's just because if we don't want to do that last meeting in December, right around Christmas time, I'm sure we have other things we'd rather be doing. I'd probably be looking to ask council to consider that on December 9th. And it's pretty benign. We want to do a budget amendment for our CARES Act money so we can take that money in from the state. And we have a couple items from the audit and a couple housekeeping things. So there's nothing to onerous there and I'll probably put that together and even email that out to everybody so you can see what the details are. And that's what I have for my report tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, moving on to council reports, I will begin with Councilwoman Brenda Kinser.
Mayor, Madam Mayor, I have no report tonight, but I do have a question. If this is a correct time to ask a question.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering who has thrown their hat in the ring for the Jared Couch position of Councilmember at Large?
Okay, so we've had a few who have applied. And in fact, because of the holidays, after a lot of discussion, we decided that we're gonna go ahead and extend it to December 18th. So the first council meeting in January will be when we make that selection and hopefully of more applications. I think I've shared with you, I've had a number of people who have called and inquired, just asking questions. I know they have downstairs as well and finance receive calls and questions. So we're just gonna keep pushing it out there, keep pushing that information out there and we'll see. We'll see what, what we get. But yeah, we, yeah. So that's.
Can we share? Can we share the names at this point?
I don't have the names in front of me, Brenda, so I can't. Sorry, yeah.
Okay, no, that's all right. Okay, so we'll be looking at that in January then.
Yes, yeah, and we'll be sending that, we'll probably be sending that out to you right after we close on the 18th. So that you have at least a couple of weeks to look over the applications and and then when we come together, hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Joella. All right, thank you. Councilwoman Joella Kestie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I had a couple things, so I jotted them down. I wanted to take this time to thank Leo and his crew for always going above and beyond with their customer service. One of their customers reached out to me to express her gratitude for her garbage man helping her carry her can back to her house after he dumps it, knowing it's a struggle for her. And I was pleased to see that the Planning Commission approved our rezoning request for the North Reed Street property. I look forward to seeing that on our council agenda for approval soon. My neighbors in Ward 2 will also be very happy. So thank you, Planning Commission for that. And last, I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and I'm looking forward to seeing the boys put up our Christmas tree downtown.
Thank you, Joellen. And Councilman Chuck Owen.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna mention that, you know, that Harold Breitner was laid to rest Saturday. And I want to congratulate the Fire Department and the Police Department. They've done an excellent job of escorting the procession down to the cemetery. I'd like to say a little bit about Harold. Some of the younger people don't really know Harold and his background. You know, Harold dedicated most of his life to serving the community of Seeger Woolley. He was on the police force for 20 years, Fire Department for 37 years. And he was a ambulance, a volunteer ambulance driver for 13 years. He was on the City Council for eight years. So you had, you had all that stuff up, you know, and that, that adds up to about 75 years of service. So I think, I think Harold I think we will miss Harold. I'll miss Harold. And he was kind of an honorary guy, but he was, he was very, he was very helpful. And he was very truthful and he, he tried to help people. So again, I just want to thank the, the Fire Department and the Police Department. And it was really a nice procession going to the cemetery. And I guess that's about all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chuck. And thank you. That was, those were very kind words about Harold. And as I understand it, it was well attended. And I did hear back from other people that they were, they thought it was quite honoring and appropriate that both the fire and the police were involved in this. So thank you, thank you, Chuck, for bringing that up. Thank you. Councilmember Brendan McGoughan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to pass along, I had a coworker mentioned that the Jamison overlay greatly improved the sound around his house. And he really wanted to thank the city for taking that on. So just want to make sure that that got passed along to you, Mark, and to the city that, that people really appreciated that and it's really helped him out. And I wanted to thank, or I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Uh, Councilmember Glenn Allen.
Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I was on with grumpy Harold 20 some years ago for three years. And he was a good councilman. That's where we could disagree in meetings, go down and have a beer at the Eagles, nobody cared. So anyway, he was a darn nice guy. So any, and congratulations, Carl. So I'm done.
Thank you, Glenn. And Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Hello. Thank you for the kind words about my neighbor Harold Breitler, person of character and integrity. And I certainly did learn quite a bit from Harold and I feel honored that he wanted to share those things with me. Especially our times together over a cup of coffee or lunch at the senior center. Thanks for those kind words, Councilmember Allen and Owen. So we've had some neighbors doing quarantine because of COVID exposure. And so many folks are in different phases of that. And I'm hearing from medical workers about the critical nature of capacity in our medical system. And so I would encourage folks to be careful and to do enjoy this Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Carl. Um, I have just a couple of things. First off, just a reminder, I want to let you know that I did hear you and we are, we have been working with Mark and Leo. And there will be a recycling presentation, the first council meeting in January, not the work session, but the council meeting itself on January 13th. Also, I don't know if any of you are aware of what Community Court is about, but it's a new program that is being generated and started here in Skagit County. Jennifer Howson, who's leading that, along with her assistant, Cara Lorenzo, will also be here on the 13th to talk more about that because our judge, Judge Stiles, has been working with us and has wanted to proceed with this. So it's really interesting. I think you'll enjoy hearing more about that, learning more about that and what our court is doing. Um, I want to thank Mark Freiberger and David Lee for reaching out to the county and really being instrumental in getting that crosswalk considered. And I think it's gonna be put into place. The county's gonna take the lead on that and that's at Prospect Street in Janice Field. So that children who live in that area will have much closer access and we don't have to worry about them crossing the road without a crosswalk because the one that we're looking at putting that is, is down much further by, I believe it's Trail Road and Cook Road. So I want to thank Mark and David Lee for working with county on that, getting that, that, that whole process started. Um, in case you're not aware, the. In case you're not aware, the Skagit COVID test site has moved. It's no longer at Skagit Valley College. It is at the Fairgrounds in Mount Vernon. And their hours on Monday, Wednesday, Friday are ten to four. And if you go on Tuesday and Thursday, it would be noon to seven. And just kind of reminder that because this is a holiday, they will be closed on Thursday and Friday. But with so many people concerned about the possibility of having come into contact with COVID, wanting to be tested, I thought you would like to have that information in case you'll, somebody in your ward would like to know. Our Christmas light parade has been canceled. It's unfortunate. I bet it was a request that was put out by Dr. Lambert, who is our Skagit County doctor. He's with the Health Board. He put out another statement out today asking that cities cancel all events. I think they were everything from parades, festivals, fireworks. Even tree lightings. We will have a tree lighting, but it will be via YouTube and I think Zoom. We're not going to ask people to gather. So that, that is something to keep in mind. There has been a huge spike, as I mentioned, here in, in the state of Washington and also within our county. So I'd like to encourage all of you to continue to maintain social distancing, don your masks, wash your hands frequently and again, avoid gatherings with anybody other than the people who live in your home. Something that the mayors and the county commissioners put together, I don't know if you saw this in Sunday's paper. But we put together, it was a very large ad. We bought a complete page and it talked about the importance of doing all of that. And in fact, I think it makes a very poignant statement when it says that more than a quarter of a million Americans lost their lives to COVID just this year. Their families will be celebrating Thanksgiving without them forever. So what we're asking is that if you want to celebrate with people that you love, then maybe this is, this is the Thanksgiving or this is the holiday that we say we're going to be spinning it apart. Other than that, I want to echo everybody else's comments about a happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you do have a peaceful, restful and joyous Thanksgiving.
Madam Mayor, I have a question about gatherings. So the street decorations that are happening this weekend, is that on or off?
I, so as far as I know, the chamber is doing that, but they're putting people on, I think, three together or something like that. It's going to be minimal at each pole. I know they're going to keep a distance. There's, Monique had put that together and I think she's being very conscientious about all of that. And you can actually check with her to see exactly how they're doing that.
Okay, well, it was a subject you brought up and I think it's just one of those nice things that will warm everyone's heart that sees our wonderfully decorated Metcalfe Street in the central business district. So I'm glad that's
I agree with you, Councilman DeYoung. That was a conversation that, that I actually had with the chamber. They were talking about the possibility of canceling everything and I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying and I think they agree too that don't want to see those things go. I think that it's, it's challenging enough for people with the separation that we have, the distancing that we need to keep. The isolation that people are experiencing. So anything that we can bring back that is normal or traditional. I think that that is reassuring to the public. So, yeah, thank you. Moving on to public comments, so I don't, I, I'll see if I can pull it up here. If there is anybody who would like to make public comment at this time, I ask that you give your name and address and keep it to a minimum of three minutes. It is six thirty-four and I will open up public comment.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Former Council, Jared Couch, two seven eight nine nine West Gilligan Creek Road. And I would just like to wish the council and city staff a very happy Thanksgiving.
Great to hear from you, Jared. Thank you very much and we wish the same for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jared. Same to you, bud. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else? If not, it is still six thirty-four and I'm going to close this public hearing comment period. I do want to remind the public that they don't necessarily have to come on Zoom and make their comment. If they want to email us or write a letter, we will be happy to read those comments into the public record at the next council meeting. So, thank you. And with that, we are going to move on to unfinished business, the twenty twenty-one utility rate ordinances. So I believe, Mark, is that you that we're going to turn this over to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So at the last council meeting, the three utilities were presented for possible adoption of the recommended rate adjustments for the year. Council acted on the ordinance nineteen sixty-five dash twenty, increasing the sewer rates. But after that adoption, there was a request for additional data. So I've, I've prepared in the memorandum that you have in the council package that's on the screen now. A memorandum that kind of summarizes the reasons for the rate increases, which I'll go through in just a minute. And the third page is, is the rate comparison that I was tasked with doing. So all three utilities on the previous meeting were recommended for two point three percent increases to the rates. And the reasoning for doing those are basically very similar among all three of the utilities. And I'll, I'll speak a little bit to the sewer as well because that was kind of implicit in the question that we wanted to look at that again. And I've summarized them really into three main categories that, that drive this request for this annual increase. The first one is operations and maintenance. As you know, we have a pretty dedicated staff that work to fulfill the city, to provide clean water and sanitation pickup and also to keep a working storm drainage system. And that, that is the mission of those three utilities. And that crew is of course paid by salary and, and benefits. And for the last several years, our salaries have been adjusted annually by pretty much a two percent COLA for each of those years. And in addition to that, our benefits have been increasing much more than, than the rate of inflation. They were seven to eight percent over the last, last couple of years with the information Doug provided from finance. Those two factors alone result in a, in a annual increase in the cost of our doing business that if we don't look at adjusting our rates, then basically we quickly get into a situation where we do not have sufficient revenue to come in to cover the cost. In addition to that, we maintain a pretty large fleet of vehicles. I think we're over a hundred and eighty vehicles now citywide that we maintain. Some of those are designated for these various utilities that I talked about. We maintain those through our equipment repair and maintenance program. We basically have all of that equipment put in a Excel spreadsheet that allows us to look at the replacement cost of that vehicle and to allocate the cost for replacement as a part of our utilities or our general fund accounts. And so we take a certain amount of the revenues from those utilities and general fund and set those aside in our, in our designated fund for that, Fund five oh one, that basically issues then when we come to the end of the useful life of a piece of equipment. We use those funds then to, to replace that without having to go out and, and affect our overall operating budget. I know the ways that, the way that used to be done, at least with the public safety part of things is Dean would basically on a yearly basis scrape together funds and put those aside to buy the new equipment when it came up. We've found a better way of doing that now in, in terms of having it in the ER and R fund. That allows us to balance the funds on a yearly basis so that we can purchase the equipment that has come due without borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. We have basically since all of those, those funds are, are contributing to that, that provides us with a pretty pool to work with to make those purchases without causing significant dips or takes from our, our revenue stream. So we've been seeing annual increases in the cost of that equipment. I do age the equipment. We use basically accounting methods to determine our future costs based on assumed interest rates or inflation rates. And we use two percent globally for all of our equipment. But there are certain pieces that we adjust even more than that. For instance, our fire apparatus has been seeing annual increases of in the, more than the range of five percent. And the police cruisers that we buy, we buy at least two a year of those. They've been inflating at about six percent a year the last couple of years and, and it's very difficult to keep up with that, with the way the ER and R was done. So we've actually manually entered higher increases in, in those two particular accounts to account for that. And again, that's a cost we have to cover from our utility costs or current expense. So that's another element we look at in terms of these annual rate increases. And the third one is our capital improvement program. I did a pretty extensive presentation to you on the capital improvements that are planned, at least for the public works facilities over the next ten years at the work session last month. And I won't try to repeat that, but you'll remember that it's fairly extensive. With the wastewater utility alone, we've got pretty extensive improvements to do. Both in the short term to keep the existing plant under its existing permit operating. And then in the long term, we're looking at a twenty million dollar plus or minus wastewater treatment plant expansion somewhere near the end of that, that ten month period or ten, ten year period. So those costs, we also have to cover either by new debt or from rate revenue. And as I mentioned during our, our capital improvements presentation and, and in our previous presentations with our sewer outlook reviews that we've done. And that you will see again in more detail when we bring the sewer comprehensive plan update to you later in December. We have elected to try to do all of the shorter term improvements from rate revenue to avoid taking on new debt for the next five or six years. The good thing that happens at the end of that time is our existing Public Works Trust Fund debt, which we took out about fourteen years ago now to pay for the collection system upgrades we did back in two thousand eight to two thousand and ten. That debt will pay off and then we will have the money that we're currently setting aside for that to use for new debt for that treatment plant, which is pretty important to avoid a, a major hit in our rates before we have to. And so putting out that all together in our sewer outlook, which we look at annually, that, that allows us to just increase the rates at about two point three percent. That's where that number comes from. To keep our, our, our rates relatively reasonable over this ten year period and to prepare us for that big hit when we come into the time that we have to finance the new treatment plant. Combination of these rate increases with these, the general facilities charge we have on our sewer system, which is also increased by that two point three percent rate annually. Combination of those things will allow us to finance up to twenty million dollars without a major rate increase when we get to that point. And that's really important. One thing that I, in my experience in doing these things over the last twenty some years, that can be a, a really big burden for the rate payers to see these eight and ten and fifteen percent increases in sewer rates in one year. So we are much better as an agency to do that in a gradual technique or way rather than doing it just when we have to do it. And you'll see in the rate comparison that some of our sister agencies in the areas have had to deal with already with this, the expense of these sewer plants and increasing their rates over the last few years. And there are some that have the lower rate structure that are going to be seeing a major increase in the not too distant future when they do upgrade their facilities. So that's pretty much the story. Solid we have in there the cost of doing business, which includes both the equipment and the labor to do that, which I've already talked about. And in addition to that, Council in Your Wisdom has designated a portion of our rates from solid waste and a smaller portion from wastewater and about an equivalent amount from stormwater and from, from our current expense fund to fund a new facility. And we're planning for that, as I've been mentioning over the last weeks, down near the sewer treatment facility now. And that's about a four million dollar project. And there's an impact on each of these rates depending on the value of the equipment that they have. That is going, it is being set aside to support the debt that we'll have to incur to build that building, about four million dollars. In terms of the, the solid waste facility itself, that amounts to about eighty-five cents for the twenty twenty-one rates that we're looking at of their total is for that, that facility. And so I wanted to point that out to you that that's there. There is a smaller amount coming out of the sewer utility. It amounts to about forty-four cents on the sewer rate. And also on the storm water utility that amounts to about forty-eight cents on that, that utility that is strictly for that public works facility. So that, that's what is amounting to that. Other than that, in solid waste, we do have some small capital projects to do periodically. But most of it relates to just our, our operations and our equipment, plus the building that we're talking about here. And again, that, that includes the mechanic operation, the, the facility maintenance for the equipment that we have. Stormwater utility, again, we have a utility that we pay about eleven dollars a month for a basic ERU or a residence in the city for that. And again, it has the same labor and equipment components that I talked about earlier. Plus its capital portion is really two parts. It is the, the small part that I just talked about for the facility. In addition to that, we have a capital plan right now that's just in its beginning stage. I've mentioned to you that we're looking at updating the stormwater management plan, which is akin to the same thing we're doing with the sewer, sewer comprehensive plan to look at our overall stormwater facility and look at what kind of system improvements we're going to have to make over the next twenty years. Right now, we're owning about fifty thousand a year, fifty thousand dollars a year for improvements to that system. And I have to tell you, I know it's not nearly enough. We have about the same lineal footage of, of pipe in the ground in the stormwater system that we do in the sanitary sewer system. Over two hundred thousand lineal feet of that. We, we don't have as much mechanical equipment, fortunately, but we do have two pump stations that have to be looked at on a, an annual basis and planned for upgrades at the appropriate time. So all of that, that will be addressed in the coming stormwater management plan, which we'll see probably in two thousand twenty-two. We'll start that now during the budget finalization, Doug and I decided we should defer the beginning of that plan that we had planned for two thousand twenty-one to make the budget balance for the stormwater utility. So that basically is, is what goes into these rate increases. And I know some of the newer council members haven't seen this in the past, but I just want to stress how important it is for the council to stay the course on this. We've worked really hard to come up with a system that keeps the rate increases relatively low. I know they're high. In terms of for the senior citizens we have, we do have programs like in the sanitary system for dealing with that. And there are probably other things that we could do if council wanted to look at it on that front. But overall, it's really important for us to continue to look at these rates on an annual basis and to stay the course on adjusting these by the Consumer Price Index. Or in the sanitary sewer system, we're pretty sure that the two point three percent, if we continue with that over the horizon, will do what we're intending for it to do. So that's pretty much a background for this and I hope that provided enough information for you to make a decision on the other two motions that are proposed for you. Ordinance nineteen sixty-six dash twenty, amending the solid waste rates and nineteen sixty-seven dash twenty amending the stormwater rates. And again, both of them have the same two point three percent increase in rates factored in there for solid waste. It, it results in thank you for changing that bill to a new rate for twenty twenty-one, that's two point three percent above the existing various sized containers. We, we use for this comparison that you see before you right now a thirty-two gallon container, which is kind of the gold standard of what most people take in town. which is kind of the gold standard of what most people take in town. And factored that in for doing this, we've, of course, have other sizes of containers, but we adjusted all of those by roughly that same amount. Uh, we adjusted the stormwater utility amount from its current eleven sixty-seven uh, up to, I don't have all of those specifics on there. I do have them if you want to look at them, but it'll go to eleven ninety-three, and again, that's a two point three percent increase. And then the sewer utility base rate goes from sixty-five oh eight and twenty twenty to sixty-six fifty-eight. Again, a two point three percent increase. So if you look at this in terms of where we're at today, uh, in comparison to the other agencies, we're a little bit above the middle of the plaque, pack there, uh, compared to um, Anacortes and Mount Vernon and uh, and Burlington, we're a little higher than them, uh, we're lower than the smaller agencies around us. Concrete being the highest, uh, they, they were one of the unfortunate uh, victims of or an ecology requirement that they upgrade their treatment facility. And so they have a, a pretty huge debt to pay off on that over the next twenty years, and their, their sewer rates are correspondingly quite high at a hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents a month there. So what you see is I've combined all three of the utility rates in, in the green box about in the middle of that chart. And you can see how we fit, that, that is sorted by that combination number. And then I projected the twenty twenty-one um, equivalent combination number there for you to look at. The, the ranking doesn't really change. And I did in the far right column, I've given you the average of the increase that those agencies are, are building into their rates. Pretty much all, everybody is going up in some uh, some manner there, except for Arlington. Uh, they're planning to pretty much stay very close to what they are now. Uh, they do use waste management as their solid waste provider and waste management pretty much up, updates their years by something at or a little above the CPI. So that factors in on the agencies that do use waste management for their, their solid waste facility. So you can see that those increases uh, for twenty to twenty-one vary from a little over two percent up to four percent depending on the agency. Some agencies have built-in annual increases to which they add to CPI. Burlington's in that class, although they are using a very low CPI this year uh, in, in doing their update. Uh, we've elected to take the more conservative um, February to February numbers. Uh, they're looking at June to June uh, and came up with a point six five percent CPI. Uh, ours is two point uh, four, two point four seven four, using the February to February. And there were a couple of agencies that took that approach, uh, it's a pretty uh, optimistic approach, given that uh, even, even with that June to June, when we've seen those rates go up quite a bit in the months since the economy started recovering somewhat from the COVID nineteen effects. But there you have it, uh, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Very nice report, Mark. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who has comments or questions for Mr. Freiberger?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Carl DeYoung.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Freiberger, thank you so much for putting this uh, this little spreadsheet together with the, the utility rate comparisons. Exactly what I was looking for from my comment uh, at last meeting. So, uh, thank you and also our discussion today and, and um, the effort that was put behind it. It uh, really helps uh, put things in the right context and uh, in the right lens. Uh, so I appreciate that. Um, just a, a question, how much uh, at the end of the year do you think this will generate in revenue?
Um, you know, I'm not sure, I, I looked at it in that manner, so it would just be a, a real wild guess, but Doug might have an answer for that or an idea.
Hey Doug.
Hey, so, and, and I'll have to get the same answer Mark has. I could sure get that information for you. You know, we've just looked at it as far as what the actual rate would be, but I can do the multiplication and uh, find out what the gross revenue that develops is and get
Would it be fair to say around thirty thousand?
Probably in that area, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else from the council? Hearing none.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I was having trouble getting it on. Uh, I do have a question for Mark. Uh, other than Duval, we are the highest rates for solid waste. How badly do we need a new solid waste yard or build? That would be my question. I, they're doing a great job there, but do we need to replace it at four million dollars?
Well, you know, that's a, that's a question for the council to really search themselves about. I know uh, last year when we talked about this, if the council had uh, decided that are working in those, those very antiquated facilities we're in, where our mechanic has to, to service our, our solid waste vehicles, because they will not go into our little shop out in the uh, out in the yard there. Uh, that was the decision that was made to upgrade this. Um, so I, I would say it's very important for the overall uh, morale and, and the workability of, of our staff. I would also say that another thing we hope to accomplish with that, which may change how this is allocated a little bit. Doug and I talked about this some today. Right now, we do not charge the general fund, public safety accounts for maintenance. Uh, and so the, the costs that we've allocated for building that new facility right now do not affect the public safety side of things. However, they do represent well over fifty percent of the future value of the equipment fleet that the city has. Uh, and so the idea is for us uh, to go to a full-time mechanic, and it's probably going to be like a mechanic and a half, uh, to support that and bring those within our fold. That's the way most larger agencies handle uh, their public safety equipment. They're not farming everything out. And we've got some, some specific ideas on how that can happen and, and even some personnel in mind, because it does take people that are certified to uh, work on the fire apparatus in particular to do that. But it's, it's something that we should do, uh, we really should. We, we should get our system to where we can do as much of our maintenance ourselves as we can, rather than having to ship it uh, down south every time we have to have a piece of uh, equipment worked on electronically in those
Okay, thank you. Do there any other questions for Mr. Freiberger? Okay, hearing then from the council, um, is the council willing to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance number one nine six six dash two zero, amending solid waste rates.
Thank you.
In a second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman McGoffin to um, adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-six twenty, amending the solid wa- solid waste rates. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Okay, um, motion carries with one opposed, and that is Councilman DeYoung. I'm looking at motion to adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-seven twenty. Do I have a motion by the council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number one nine six seven dash two zero, uh, amending stormwater rates.
Madam Mayor, uh, Councilman Allen, I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by uh, Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Allen um, to adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-seven twenty, the stormwater rates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Aye.
Um, motion carries with um, Councilman Owen and Councilman DeYoung opposing. All right, thank you, council. With that, we will move on to uh, first read of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget. Mr. Merriman.
Mentioned in my opening comments, these are just for introduction tonight for first read. Uh, on the ninth of December, I'll go ahead and get some more information and talk about the budget itself. But this is so you can see what those appropriation balances are. Uh, so there isn't a presentation or anything else. This is just her first read.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman DeYoung.
Yeah, um, I, I'm just doing some bookmarking here and may have uh, my Vienna sausage or fingers may have gone too far, so I'm just checking in here. Uh, is this uh, in regards to ordinance nineteen seventy-one twenty?
This is the first read of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget, you see here, um.
Yeah, this would be nineteen
Seventy, yeah, nineteen seven dash twenty.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I am centered. Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to uh, not unless Mr., Mr. Merriman, did you have anything more you wanted to say on that?
Nothing more on that.
Okay, then moving on to the first read of the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance, and this is um, ordinance number nineteen seventy-one twenty.
Okay, and this one is the same thing. It's our first read. This is the ordinance we do every year for those employees that are not represented in a union or bargaining unit. And so we're required to bring these for, there are a couple of the different positions that are required in our city code. Uh, like you'll see the municipal court judge. I added them uh, in because I found that in the code this year, that that's supposed to be said by ordinance each year. So I'm getting these things all set up to match our code like that. So again, this is for first read and I'll be back for discussion and adoption on December ninth.
All right, thank you, Mr. Merriman. Okay. Are there any questions or discussion for Mr. Merriman?
Madam Mayor, it's Councilmember DeYoung.
Councilmember DeYoung.
Thanks so much. Hey, um, uh, I'm looking at page fifty-seven of our packet, and I think it's uh, the second lineup of, of the list of people that are, uh, this is covered. I'm, I'm under the impression that minimum wage next year is going to be a little bit higher than thirteen fifty. Page fifty-seven, I think it is.
Okay, what we'll do is I will check that out and see how
I think it's thirteen sixty-seven or something like that for the state, yeah.
Okay, we'll check that out and then make sure when we bring the final ordinance forward at the next meeting, we'll have that adjusted.
Okay, cool beans. Thanks, Doug.
All right, so that is our meeting tonight. Um, I want to thank everybody for um, good questions and participation and getting those ordinance passed. And I again wish all of you a wonderful Thanksgiving, um, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving, everyone.